Okay, I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will be also livestreamed for public viewing, but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Emailed comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. Can I have roll call, please?
Mayor Kirchner.
President.
Vice Mayor Harris. Councilmember Boom Garden.
Here.
Councilmember Pescuali.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here. Thank you for that. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one item for closed session this evening. It's confirmed with real property negotiator pursuant to government code section 54956.8. The property is APN 5109520, located at 1483 Gray Avenue, Yuba City, California. The negotiator is Diana Langley, City Manager slash Executive Director. The negotiating parties are to be determined. Under negotiation is whether to sell the properties and if so, the price and terms of payment.
Thank you for that, City Attorney. Do we have any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn to closed session. Okay. Good evening and welcome. This is called ordered regular city council meeting and Housing Succession Agency. This meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing, but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Emailed comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. Can I have roll call, please?
Mayor Kirchner.
President.
Vice Mayor Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Boom Garden.
Here.
Councilmember Pescuali.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
Thank you for that. We are going to begin this evening with a invocation by Sutter County Sheriff, City County Sheriff's Chaplain Doug, excuse me, Dave Klugman?
Kugelmann.
Kugelmann.
Close enough.
Close enough. And we will remain standing. The pledge will be given by Councilmember Dave Shaw.
Psalm 127:1, your word says, "Unless the Lord builds the house, the builder's labor in vain; unless the Lord watches over the city, the guards stand watch in vain." This verse makes it clear that if we rely solely on human effort, our efforts will be in vain. So the reason we start this council meeting with prayer is because we recognize the reality of who you are, Lord, and your ability to help and guide our Yuba City council members. We're truly thankful for those who have been elected to serve on this council. We do pray you'd give each of them wisdom, insight, knowledge, and understanding that they need to make those well-informed decisions to serve the best interests of Yuba City. Pray also you would bless their relationships, their families, their health. We know they can be at their absolute best if their relationships are intact and they remain in good health. And lastly, Lord, I'd be remiss if I didn't pray for what's going on in the Middle East. Honestly, Lord, we need you. They need you. This world desperately needs you. I pray you would intervene and bring stability to that region. If we ever needed you, Lord, we need you now. Again, bless this meeting, and we ask all these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. City Attorney's report on closed session items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you, sir. Modifications approval agenda, looks like we're good. We'll move forward with ceremonial presentations. Number one, retirement proclamation for Robert Condry Parks and Grounds Superintendent. I would like to invite Mr. Rob Condry to come forward with counsel, please. Okay. Please welcome Rob Condry, Parks Rec Superintendent. Congratulations to Rob on your retirement. Whereas, Robert Condry retired from the city of Yuba City with 28 years of dedicated service on October 12, 2023. And in 1998, Robert began his career at the city as a park maintenance worker and throughout the years eventually became the Park and Grounds Superintendent. Robert Condry was always a reliable, dedicated, and loyal employee of the city of Yuba City's Park and Recreation Department. He drove the city bus on many occasions. I've seen that.
Pretty good.
Pretty good. Better than, very good. He participated in Annual Tree City USA. He maintained the best parks in the Yuba Sutter area. Robert was always willing to lend a hand. Robert will drop whatever he is doing to help a fellow person in need, a character that we will dearly miss at the city, and that's a truth. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Wade Kirchner, Mayor of the city of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby commend Robert's outstanding and devoted service and sincerely urge all residents of the city of Yuba City to join me in recognizing Mr. Robert Condry for all of his contributions to the city, to Yuba City's community in the past 28 years. Let's give him a hand. Do you have a few words you'd like to say?
Not many. Mayor forgot about like the awards I won for best dressed at the city dinners and stuff like that. I really appreciate everything the city's given to me, you know, the opportunities. Very rewarding job. I started out picking up trash and ended up with super duper. No, fair work.
Robert's always there for the 4th of July parade. Yeah, oh yeah, he's always there.
I might come back.
Okay.
Maybe you have to pay me though.
Okay. We'll pass the head round. Okay, number two, Seek Awareness and Appreciation Month proclamation. I'd like to invite Seek Temple President Sarf Tiara and temple directors to come forward, please. So many of you know, one of the traditions that goes back 40, one of the traditions that goes back 44 years now, is that right? Forty-four years, 1979, one of the traditions here in Yuba City is our annual Seek Parade that, well, if you haven't gone, I would encourage you to attend. There's people from literally all over the world that come to this event. It really puts us on the map. It makes us unique. And you never go away hungry or thirsty. And so it's a really special event, so thank you for that. Seek Awareness and Appreciation Month, November 2023. Whereas Sikhs have been living in the United States for more than 100 years, and Sikhism is the fifth largest religious religion in the world today. The city of Yuba City has a significant population of Sikhs and is committed to respecting the heritage and religions of our diverse community. The Seek Temple, under the leadership of President Sarf Tiara and their board of directors, recently hosted the successful and well-attended 44th, you gotta pronounce that for me, Nargatitam? Is that right?
Nargatitam.
Thank you. Which included the annual Seek Parade. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Wade Kirchner, Mayor of the Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2023 to be Seek Awareness and Appreciation Month. Let's give them a hand. Mr. President, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Well, it's been a long, hard summer for us as farmers, but this makes it very challenging and very easy at the end because all the prayers that are going on at the temple, it makes things a lot easier for all of us in this community, especially what we're facing with earlier, that was said, the war and everything's going on. These prayers are helpful to make peace in ourself, and we are all blessed as Sutter County community. All of us should be proud of what we got going on here as Sikh. And I want to appreciate all you guys from the city, starting with the mayor and the staff, what you guys have done in the past years and going forward, where you guys make our job a lot easier than where we are. I know we have a lot of strains, the new world that we live in, and your job is very tough to get where we are today. And I still, from our whole board and our community, appreciate what you guys do. And I want to thank the city.
Well, thank you again, like Sarf said. I hope we should work together. I always call Yuba City the biggest little city of the United States for Punjabi community. We always feel comfort when we live here like a family. I mean, a small city like that, close to 100,000 people showed up, and one day we organize with your support. Let's work together, pray peace for the whole world. God is one, just ask for a peace for the whole world like, gentlemen, start this meeting. We should intact together. We should work together like a family. A long-lived Yuba City. Bhagwadji ka khaal saaf, bhagwadji ki pathe. Thank you.
So if you don't mind, come on forward.
Get a cameo. Come on, guys. He said everybody.
Oh, you're good, you're good. Just made me look bad. We got one, we either got one more person. Come on, come on.
Just in time.
One, two, three, I'll pick a bunch. Okay, got everyone in, we're good. I've gotten like 15.
Awesome. Thank you.
I've been getting so much. I got a chip of these guys, I hear you got a mean heart. You got a mean heart, single night, go on.
It's freedom now.
I got to figure out how to win this one.
I can really work with it.
Yes, I know.
I would like to, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge the, all the hard work that city staff and also our partners with the county do year in and year out to make the Seek Parade a success. At this point, I'd like to invite Mina York, Community Outreach Coordinator for Casa de Esperanza, to come forward, please. Please welcome Mina York from Casa de Esperanza. She is the Community Outreach Coordinator, and this is in recognition of Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2023. Whereas domestic violence leaves an imprint of fear and hostility, and research shows that by creating communities where people are connected, supported, and care for one another, it can reduce incidence of domestic violence. The city of Yuba City is committed to restoring the right to, the right to freedom from fear in our own homes and our communities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Wade Kirchner, Mayor of the city of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We urge all citizens, agencies, and businesses to work together as a team in our community through prevention and intervention and education programs to take a stand until society has zero tolerance for domestic violence. Can we give, yeah. Would you like to say a few words?
Um, all I wanted to say was thank you to the council and thank you to the city for all your support. Um, yeah, Casa does a lot of work. I'm brand new to the board, but I'm just seeing everything that they do every single day. It's amazing. We help a lot of people. Our stats are up this year, which is sad, but I feel like we're reaching more people, which is great.
Thank you. And thank you for everything you do. Thank you. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action items appearing on a consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any other items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not listed on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinion of the groups. And we do have a speaker's card from Kim Markward?
Yes.
The podium chair is, ma'am.
All right. My name is Kimberly Markward. I'm with Heaven Can Wait Life Coaching here in Yuba City. I've been attending these meetings here just recently, and this is my third meeting. And in the second meeting, when I came in here, I had to report how I was arrested from the Yuba City Police Department where for daytime camping and putting handcuffs left with bruises on my body to forcefully arrest me for daytime camping. Now, I'm not a daytime camper, just like there's no reason for anybody, if I'm not a threat to y'all, why would there be bruises on my body from, from the officers? How many, let me ask you this, how many daytime campers camping tickets have you had this year? Have you guys written any daytime camping tickets this year? No, you haven't written any in about three years. No camping tickets in about three years, but guess what? I've, I've got seven of them, and I'm not even camping. I'm doing my business where I support my community members and the homeless and the severely mentally ill, or whoever needs my services that God provides me to do for these people in my community. But why would I have bruises on my body? Am I that much of a threat? I've never had a resisting arrest because I'm not a criminal, you know? I haven't been arrested other than for daytime camping. And this Sunday, it happened to me again where they forcefully came into my tent that I had my business set up, all my documents, all my records and everything, and they forcefully drug me out of there. I got bruises on my body again and took all my documentation and evidence, you know, and took my vehicle, which wasn't even a part of any of this. It was parked in the parking lot, and it was locked up, and it's legal, and, but you all chose to take my keys from my body after you threw me to the ground for a daytime camping ticket. Are we serious, people? Something's got to be done about this, and I'm talking immediately. I have no transportation now, which would be fine, but I'm telling you, why is there, am I that much of a threat? I guess I am. But you got to get it under control, unless it's just going to be so much bigger. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further comments?
I want to have my vehicle back, please, too. Thank you.
Do we have any further comments from the public? Any further comments from the public? Okay, seeing none? Consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time. Council votes to, council votes on the motion will ask members of the city council to request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Do we have any comments from the public on consent counter items five through eight? Five through eight. Okay, seeing none? I'll bring it back to council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Approve, motion to approve five, six, seven, and eight of the consent calendar?
I've got a motion from Councilmember Pescuali.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Shaw. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Okay, business items. Number nine, Revenue Ad Hoc Committee Recommendation. This is presented by our city manager, Diana Langley.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So last December, city council designated Vice Mayor Harris and Councilmember Boom Garden as the Revenue Ad Hoc Committee. In March, council awarded a contract to Smart Marketing to help us to evaluate a proposal for a revenue measure for the city. And so over the last few months, in working with Smart Marketing, Crystal Martin, we've really done a lot of work to work with staff to identify needs within the city. You saw it in the budget workshop in May, where staff took a different approach in that we didn't just bring forward items that we felt could be approved through the budget, but we also identified items that were desired to, to either improve levels of service or maintain levels of service. And so we're here before you tonight. The Revenue Ad Hoc members will be contributing comments throughout my presentation and then making a recommendation at the end. And it's taken a few months to get us to this point, but we've been able to put a lot together. So, this is a Crystal Martin quote, "So to have a successful revenue measure, Yuba City must present a carefully crafted solution to a clearly articulated problem. As we know with this council, you know, you're data-driven, and so you want to see, you want to review the documents yourself, you want to be invested in the budget, determine where the needs are, and then also work to figure out the direction that we need to Ben Moody, the Public Works Director in May, gave you a presentation related to roads. Based upon the current condition of the roadways, we have a $150 million deferred maintenance program. In order to maintain the existing condition, it would cost $11.5 million per year, and to achieve state average, which is good, it's, it's not great, it's, it's okay, it's $18.5 million per year. The grand jury for 2022, 2023 spent a lot of time with staff, spent a lot of time with Ben, going through the budget, going through the pavement management system, evaluating the roads. And, you know, what they showed is that there's no part of the budget that could be trimmed to get the funding necessary to address roads. And they recommended that the city council should propose a sales tax to only Yuba City voters dedicated to road repair. So a couple of council meetings ago, city council received the grand jury report, provided a response to the grand jury, of which one of the items would be that city council would consider a revenue measure, not only for roads, but for public safety as well.
So, our turn for a second. Thanks for, let's go back to roads real quick. You know, if, if you, if you take a look at that number of the deferred maintenance, it's huge. And there's a couple of reasons for that. Number one, and probably most importantly, is that this explosion of costs for repairing roads. As everyone knows and experiences, there's a lot, a lot of increased costs associated with anything that has to do with construction. So that's part of it. The other part of it is the city inherited through annexation a lot of, of roads that were not necessarily intended to be driven on by the volume of the traffic that we have going through those roads today. A lot of discussion on social media about current road repair and why, if I'm already paying gas tax and road tax, isn't that money going towards that? I would invite anyone who has that question to contact Mr. Moody, who has a short presentation that shows you exactly how much money the city receives from the state, our money through gas tax and road tax, and how that's applied. There's also a quick little presentation he has about how far that, that money goes, like a per mile cost, to repair the road and/or just temporarily fix it. It's really eye-opening, and I would encourage anyone who has a question about whether or not the city is spending its money correctly on roads, to actually take, take that up, and we probably could put it up on the website as well, if it's not already up there. But I just wanted to make that comment because there, there seems to be a lot of messaging right now about, I'm already paying for that. Yes, you are, I am too, but we're not getting back anything close to what we need to, to be able to repair the roads in this city.
To add to that, through SB1, which was approved in 2017, the city receives funding specific for road maintenance. Currently, what we spend on true road maintenance is approximately $1.5 million per year. That's compared to that $11.5 million per year to maintain existing condition. The SB1 money is not in perpetuity, and so it was a 10-year program that would need to be renewed. So even if, if that were to go away, then we're really looking at, we, we don't have funds to put towards road maintenance.
I would also add that some of the bigger projects that you have seen going on in the city with, whether it's the Bridge Street Improvement or, or other things that are going on, other projects Walton to be coming forward, Franklin was one, a lot of those funds are, they are funded through grants that we receive from SECOG, but we have a, we have to pay for some of that as well. Our Public Works Department does a phenomenal job, in my opinion, of going out and, and seeking and getting funding for some of these major projects. Otherwise, it would be a lot worse than what you see up there on the slide.
So moving on to fire, Chief Alexander, which is participating virtually, he did a presentation related to a couple of different items, one being the ladder truck. So we have a new ladder truck. It's stationed at Station 3. We received a SAFER grant, which allows us to put a fourth person on that ladder truck. If you talk to the crew at Station 3, that fourth person is invaluable in terms of their response to situations. It allows them to address fires with two, two-person crews. It really allows them to handle so much more. And so city council, even though the, these employees are funded through SAFER grant, council made them permanent positions. That funding goes away in '24, '25, and so we would need funding of approximately $538,000 to continue to fund those positions. And so we would need funding of approximately 538,000 to continue to fund those positions. We also, with Station One, which is located at Clark and Forbes across from the library, that is our primary fire station in Uba City with the highest call volume. And with that, we're reaching, getting close to reaching critical levels, which will trigger an additional engine company. And why is that so important? That's because of response times. Not only does the fire department respond to fires, they respond to a multitude of medical aid calls, mutual aid calls. In fact, they had one today. And so Fire Station One, as they continue to reach that call volume threshold, we need that additional engine company. The station was built in the early 1960s. It wasn't built for an additional engine company. It also wasn't built for the current ladder trucks in terms of height of the bay. And so the staff's recommendation would be to demo the existing Fire Station One. It has a lot of issues anyway. And build a new station on the same site that could accommodate two engine companies. So the building replacement is approximately $20 million. The additional engine is just under $1 million. The additional engine company in terms of the staffing is $2 million per year. And then the personnel outfitting is $107,000 per year. What's so key about this, as we're considering a revenue measure, if you look at a fire engine, the lead time is about three years. So if we were to order it today, we wouldn't receive it until about 2027. And when we look at a building replacement, it takes time to hire the consultants, to do the design, to bid, and then construct. So even if we were to start that project today, you're likely three years or so out. And so as much as we're having this conversation in 2023, what we're really talking about is what's going to happen in 2026, 2027. And then this is something, County Service Area G. This is when the city of Uba City took over the Walton Fire Protection District, which encompasses an area larger than not only the city limits, but also the sphere of influence. The city and the county have an agreement that the city will provide fire services to CSAG. And so the boundary for CSAG to the north is Eager Road. To the west, it pretty much follows township. To the south, it goes between Stewart and Berry. And then to the east, it is the river. So the river bottoms, even though that's within the county, Uba City Fire responds because it's within CSAG. So the cost to service, CSAG area is about just under 1.4 million dollars. We receive reimbursement through the county, which they collect from property owners, of approximately $928,000. And so it's a net loss to the city of approximately $446,000 to provide fire service to the CSAG area.
Through the mayor?
A couple of things. Can you go back one, one slide, please, Diana? So the, I'm going to go one by one down. Calls reaching critical levels, you know, why is Uba City staffed differently than, say, our neighbors are? As a, as an economic engine of Sutter County, which means that most of the business is generated within, within Uba City, we have the highest level of risk if something happens to one of those particular occupancies. In addition to the residential, if we lose a, let's just say we lose something like a Home Depot or even a Sam's Club. Not only do we have to staff to be able to respond to that, but if, if something did happen there, we would lose property tax for a period of time. We would lose sales tax for a period of time and probably just as important, if not more importantly, the jobs. So there is a distinct, different level of staffing that Uba City requires in this area because it is much more municipally set up to serve a, a, the community that exists here. It's not just an orchard or farm buildings, et cetera. It's different in, in the city. And so therefore, when you start talking about 12,000 calls a year, which is what they are rapidly approaching, that's why they're needing an additional engine company. We, with five, five response units out there right now, they're busy. They are very busy. And there comes a time when we have a thing called call stacking, simultaneous calls. They're, they're at a point, or will be soon there, if they're not there now, where we'll have to wait or ask, rely on our, our neighbors for help. So that's the additional engine company. The building replacement, I lived in that building for quite a few years. We've extensively remodeled that thing a lot since the early 1960s. The thing is, the thing is, is, is it has lived its useful life. Personal outfitting, that's just the protective clothing. You cannot, there's no skimping on that. That's OSHA required stuff. That's just a, a cost of doing business. The fire engines, again, just like anything else that's on, on wheels anymore, just exploded in cost. And as Diana mentioned, this is something that's going to, if you order one today, you're lucky to get it in a couple of years. So you have to be forward thinking. And as we approach this as a revenue ad hoc committee, we're not talking about a crisis that exists today. What we're doing is looking out to the future and going, okay, we don't want to be in a crisis mode. We want to be responsible and put the things in place ahead of time so that we don't end up chasing something. This, therefore, the fire engine, we, we'd like to order it today because we know we're going to need it. What's the consequence? Not being able to respond. What's the, the consequence of not responding? Life, building loss, you name it. Next slide. CSAG, and not many people know about this. This, this is, this is something that doesn't, doesn't get a lot of talk, but it is a, this is a partnership between the county and the city. The county, the county contracts with us to provide fire service in Sutter County. This isn't Uba City covering Uba City stuff. This is Uba City providing service to areas outside of the city limits. And as you see, we're doing that right now. The only reason that we're showing that there's a net loss there is because we get a lot of talk about, well, you know, you're not paying your fair share. Well, I, I, you know, we can talk a lot about that and we'll probably do so over the, the next few months. But it's also good to know that Uba City is partnering with the county and we're, we're, we're helping them too. So I just want that to be noted.
All right, now we're going to transition to police. So in 2022, we did a workshop where the, the question was asked, how does the city contribute to the homelessness effort? And so each department went through and identified the calls for service related to homelessness, the different services that we provide. And when you quantified that, it, it was approximately 1.4 million dollars. And that was, that was direct cost. That's not also contributions that we make through other funding programs like CDBG. And so the other thing is Officer Koski, our homeless liaison officer, when we worked with him and others in the police department about what can we do to provide additional resources related to homelessness, there were three things that stood out. One was a homeless liaison social worker. So when the homeless liaison officers, which we have two, when they make contact with homeless individuals, they may make, you know, 50, 70 contacts before they get the person to the point that they're ready to accept services. Once that happens, the homeless liaison officer needs to then go coordinate with the county to try to find a bed for the person and try to, try and find a treatment facility. What the social worker would do would be constantly coordinating with the county to, to track what resources are available so that when somebody's ready, we can immediately get them into help. With the community service officer plus a vehicle, the intent of this position would be to help individuals go to the DMV to get their ID, go to Hands of Hope for coordinated entry. It would also help to free up the code enforcement officers because this person could then coordinate with what I'll talk about next, the clean team, related to going around and picking up debris or addressing situations at, at people's businesses. So the next item is the clean team. This would be four individuals within Public Works. They would have staggered workdays so that we have seven-day-a-week coverage. It would include a dump trailer and two trucks. Their primary job would be to go around the city cleaning up debris, shopping carts. If somebody has an issue where somebody's made a mess in their front door, they'd be able to call, get that addressed. They'd be equipped with pressure washers and other equipment so they can address things quickly. All of that comes to a cost of $562,000 per year for the staff time, plus $195,000 for the equipment and vehicles. The next item related to police is the Walton Service Area. The city refers to it as Beat Six. Its limits are south of Franklin, west of 99. And currently, the, under the 2000 Master Tax Exchange Agreement, the Sutter County Sheriff provides law enforcement services to the Beat Six area, also referred to as the Walton Area or the Happy Park Area. And per the Master Tax Exchange Agreement, it transitions to the city once it reaches a certain threshold, population threshold, within that southwest area. We are not close to that threshold. Even if the city were to annex the entire Keyhole Area, it gets us closer. We might be at that threshold, but it's really going to acquire, require additional development in the southwest portion of town. And so with that, staff is proposing to staff another beat within the police department so that we could transition those services from the sheriff's department to the city. This would require amending the Master Tax Exchange Agreement so that the city and the county are both on board. And then it would take approximately a year to transition over because of the amount of time it takes to hire the personnel. That cost is 1.5 million dollars per year. And then for the equipment and vehicles, 431,000 dollars per year.
So to my fellow council members, I know you've heard long and hard over the time that you've all been here about Beat Six. And again, the, the Master Tax Exchange Agreement was, was developed 2000, 2001 with the projection that, that the city would continue to grow, of course, and that that trigger would be met. Well, it's not been met. It's time to re, revisit that. But I think fundamentally, the city needs to be protecting the city. No disrespect to sheriff and the services they're provided, they're providing. But we hear it loud and clear from the residents. I think in a, in our opinion, anyway, as an ad hoc committee, it, it's time for us to consider what that would be, for us to just take that over. Of course, we would have to negotiate the, you know, the trigger points, et cetera, with the county. I do believe they have a desire in some form to, to transfer that over to us as well. But this is something I think is, is important. And again, when you start talking about the costs, it, it, it isn't cheap, but it is, you know, city residents, in my opinion, should be receiving services from city, city personnel. So that's, that's the Beat Six piece. I want to go back to the homeless slide real quick. This is a big issue for us, you know, that, that everyone's trying to fix a homeless problem. I'm not going to say this is going to fix a homeless problem, but this is going to address a need that happens almost daily within our city and that our police department now is tasked daily with, with dealing from calls for service from, from residents, from businesses, from those folks who are actually out on the, that are homeless and others. We think that this is a reasonable effort to boost those services that we already have in place that would address, address some of the issues. The homeless liaison social worker, obviously, that would be something that we would partner with. We don't, with the county, there are social folks there that we need to. The community service officer and vehicle, we know what Troy and, gosh darn it.
Officer Leonard.
Yes, Officer Leonard. She's, they, they're doing a terrific job, but they need help. And then the clean team is something that we have seen used in other municipalities to go out and address that, that unfortunate issue, which is somebody dumped something on somebody's private property or in front of their business or, or, or worse. And so this is an investment in trying to help a, a growing problem that exists within the city of Uba City. So I think, again, everything that you're seeing, we feel is something that we could use even today if we had the money, but we don't. And so th, these are things that I hope you can consider and when the time is right. If you have questions about those, we'd be happy to try to address them.
All right. So when you add up the grand total, the total additional funding needed for Uba City roads and public safety is 100, just under 172 million dollars, plus ongoing 20, just under 24 million dollars per year. So with that said, what could a potential revenue measure generate? So in 2024, which is what we're looking at, November 2024, a citywide revenue measure of a quarter percent would generate approximately 3.75 million, half a percent, approximately 7.5 billion, and 1% approximately 15 million dollars per year. So what, through this process, Crystal Martin and I have, have met with all of the council members. And, you know, overwhelmingly, we heard that there's a desire to support Sutter County. And the support lies with services that directly affect city residents, which are also Sutter County residents. And so some of the areas that we've identified are relief Sutter County and the Sheriff's Department of cost relative to covering the Walton Happy Park area. So that's that Beat Six area. The district attorney's office, additional prosecutors, competitive pay. We had DA Jen Dupre come to a citizen ad hoc meeting where she talked about the challenges that are occurring in the DA's office. And it's extremely difficult, not only to get additional prosecutors, but to retain existing prosecutors. And then part of that's an issue of competitive pay. Sheriff Barnes provided information related to needs within the sheriff's department, the jail, court bailiff. You know, the jail, my understanding, has capacity, but they need additional resources to be able to put, place people in the jail. And what we've heard is that, you know, in some situations, jail can be a positive for a person because it gives them a chance to, you know, address their drug or alcohol issues. And, you know, sometimes they come out better for it at the end. And then also homeless response efforts within the county. So one of the things that, through research, there's 180-plus cities in California with a population over 50,000. Only eight are still at the minimum sales tax rate of 7.25%. And we are one of those eight. The others are Camarillo, Hanford, Lincoln, Reading, Rockland, Simi Valley, and Thousand Oaks. So I did a little bit of research on some of these. And I'm just going to quote a couple of quotes from some of their budgets. So Lincoln, City of Lincoln, from their fiscal year 2325 budget wrote, because they are going into a deficit position, "In order to cure these deficits and ensure the fiscal sustainability of the general fund, the city will either need to obtain an additional revenue source, i.e. additional sales taxes or utility user tax, or significantly reduce expenses." City of Rockland for their fiscal year 2324 budget. "As we forecast the city's anticipated revenues and expenses over the next five-year period, it is important to note that steps will be needed in the future to enhance revenues and, and/or reduce expenditures to combat costs that are naturally rising at a higher rate than revenues. Our city's revenue outlook is generally positive, but increased operational costs, slowing of residential development, and increasing labor costs and liabilities require prudent monitoring of revenues and expenditures to ensure stability." And then Reading, what sets Reading apart is they have a cannabis tax. So for fiscal, for fiscal year 2324, they were anticipating just under 2.1 million dollars of revenues from the cannabis tax. And in 2425, just over 2.1 million dollars of revenue tax. Also, within Hanford and the county that Hanford's in, they've tried revenue measures specific to emergency services. Those measures, that measure was not passed. So you can start to see a pattern that we're one of eight, but we're not the only ones that are having these discussions about what to do related to ongoing revenue sources. The other thing in looking at the November 2022 election results, a general tax which requires, you know, 50% plus one, simple majority, cities have an eight, had an 82% success rate. So 98 of 119 cities that tried to pass a general tax, passed. Counties had a 44% success rate. So four of the nine counties that did a general revenue measure, passed. Specific taxes, in which the funds are going to a specific purpose, requires a two-thirds vote to pass. Cities had a 53% success rate. Counties had a 40% success rate. So as you can see, cities that try to implement a general tax have a much higher success rate than cities or counties that try to do a specific tax or a county that tries to do a general tax. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to the revenue ad hoc committee to discuss their recommendation.
Do you have the last slide by chance? Yeah. So these are our recommendations after significant research. And, and when they talk about significant research, it's been a lot. We, beginning with the information provided for the budget ad hoc committee, when they went down and did a deep dive into the budget line by line and discovered for themselves firsthand that there is pretty much nowhere left to cut. And so after, you know, avoiding being, having this conversation for as long as possible, being a municipality, we do, we, our primary source of revenue is taxes. We do, we do a good job of getting grants and whatnot, particularly with roads and et cetera. But the time has come to have this, the tough conversation where, okay, we need to reach out to folks in the city and to... out to folks in the city and to see what we're asking for a 1%, which should be a 15 million dollars a year. Some folks have asked us, well, if you need more than that, why aren't you asking for more than that? Why don't I go for a two or a 2.5? But the data doesn't show that, that would be successful. A, a term that is, or a phrase that's been popular in our meetings is it's not necessarily what you need, it's what you can get. And we don't believe we can get more than 1%. We don't think that the voters have an appetite for more than that at this time. So we come down to 15 million dollars a year. We've just had a slide where, you know, it says general tax here, would explains why we believe a general tax is the way to go because it has a much higher, much higher possibility of being successful. Of course, it would be within the city limits. We don't have the ability to extend beyond that. And primarily, we're going, we're focusing on roads and public safety is where everything, we've already established that as accounts was one of our higher priorities. We've had a very good, some very brief but detailed slides explaining where that money would go. And I think every, everything that's allocated or intended for up there is very worthy and probably even a little bit more if, if we had our way. So that's what we like to do. The, you know, there's also been discussion, of course, with the county, with, with Sutter County, with their major A and, and the way that played out. Does the city and the county partner? Our, our purse here today is, are we going to recommend a revenue measure for us within the city? And that answer is yes. We've already laid forth those reasons. The discussions with the county, we've had several meetings with them and we probably will have more. That's kind of a TBD as far, you know, people wants, want to get down to the numbers, who's sharing what? Because we both, right, and understandably so, we need more than it's going to be available. If we did a county-wide at 1%, it's around 20 million dollars. We both need that and then some. So it comes down to capitalizing on relationships and, and hopefully some significant voter trust that, which was displayed by voting us to these chairs in the first place, that we were going to put the money where we need it most. And we, we were serious when we talked about public safety, roads, and everything else that was discussed up here. We do not think that would be a good idea to have competing or overlapping initiatives simply because if the, if the county, for example, decided to do 1% county-wide and then we do 1% city-wide, you're going to have voters in the city that's going to have two, two revenue measures potentially bumping up 2%. That's going to either turn people away or confuse them or both. And we don't want to do that. So we're, we would like to avoid overlapping and competing measures for that. So there's definitely back to that. We have more need than the money is projected to be available should this be successful. However, we do have a plan for it. And I think it'd be put to very good use. And if some of it is unprecedented, as far as cities helping out the county sheriff, for example, and the jail, unprecedented, but we remain willing and hopefully all will too, to be a part of that and be good neighbors, be good partners, and contribute to that with, with DA as well and also our Beat Six area if possible. I agree with Councilmember Boomgarden when he said that, you know, we need to get that taken care of once and for all. They're city residents and they deserve city services and we would like to do what we can to make that happen. Sure you have any more of that, sir?
Just a couple of things. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I think you covered 99% of it. A couple of quick things is, you know, it, it's never easy to talk about taxes. And certainly during my time on the council, I have made it pretty clear that I really wanted taxes if I was going to support them to go to special or to significant, or not special, but to, to unique items or those things that it would, we had it intended to. I, I do believe there's a way to make that happen with an advisory committee as well as ourselves. And there may be other mechanisms that we've heard of. We're still taking a look at that. But the, it's clear almost two to one that if we are going to ask the citizens of Uba City to support a revenue measure, that it needs to be a general measure. It has, you know, again, two to one possibility of passing. This notion that, that we want to share with the county, that, that doesn't happen a lot in, in state of California. In fact, it's rather unique that cities indicate a willingness to share with the county on revenue measures. And for that, I think it's, it's something for us to, to strongly consider because as they will say, some of what they do serves city residents. I have certainly made the comment that some of what we do serves county residents. So there is, there is a, a quid pro quo or this for that. But, you know, when you're talking about helping the district attorney who, who is in the chain of taking care of some things that our local police department needs taken care of, or jails, which house city residents, or the homeless, which is a, you know, a community or region-wide problem, I think there's some synergies there that we can take advantage of. Again, you know, we can't impose a tax, as you well know here, but the county, or the citizens need to know that. If we decide to move forward, all we'll be doing is putting together the package for the, our residents to consider. We think we can make a compelling argument for that. That's what we are tasked to do as your representatives out there. I think it's probably time now for us to kind of step back and take some questions from you all and/or whomever. But I want to acknowledge the hard work of city staff, our consultant, for pushing, pushing us to push ourselves to really take a look at a lot of different opportunities out there. I think we have the bones of a really good revenue measure that could strongly be considered by residents. On the notion of, of partnering with the county, you know, want to make it loud and clear, it's my recommendation that we continue to explore that. But as the Vice Mayor said, you know, the no competing or overlapping initiatives, I don't think that serves anybody well. They made a comment at their last meeting about doing a specific tax for their, for their fire department. I certainly, as an ex-fire chief, will be interested to learn more about what that means to them. And I, I certainly know that, that county fire obviously has some needs as well. But as a representative of the city, so do we. So I just wanted to make sure that, that we are clear on that. No one here doesn't think they have a need for county service, but we do have a need here in the city for our fire department, our police department, and our homeless efforts. Finally, on roads. One of the things that we've chatted about was how can we get the biggest bang for our buck, right? So we go out for a revenue measure and we get money. How, how long is it going to take before these roads, which we all drive on every day, start to get repaired? There are some funding mechanisms where we can make some dramatic, dramatic impacts on these roads relatively quickly. And, and that would be one of the things that, again, as this thing moves down the road, down the road, that we would, that we would be advocating for, or at least tasking staff with putting, bringing forth to us for consideration. So with that, thank you, Diana. Thank you, Crystal. Thank the staff for their help in, in putting up with us as we've asked a lot of questions and demanded a lot of, a lot of information in putting forth this recommendation to you.
Thank you, sir. Before I bring it back to council for more discussion, do we have any comments from the public on this item? Any comments from the public on this item? Okay, I'll bring it back to the rest of the council for discussion.
Through the mayor? I know every year when I get my little blue slips in the mail, I don't pay a city property tax. I pay a county property tax. And I'm a county resident that lives in the city. And so the, the designation of the, the county saying, oh, we, you know, we're, we're supporting this or that, I'm still a county resident. And the way we're set up is we have a county jail. We don't have a city jail. So yeah, majority of the people who live and commit crimes are in the city, but they're are in our county. So when you start separating these costs, I, I, I don't get the, the mindset of, of separation from me being a county resident living in the city. So I, I can't quite buy into that. When you've got a county government that's eight times the budget of this city with, okay, we're, they talk about that GCS, there's like 8,000 people in that area that are not in the city that we service. So we've got 78,000 out of a 99,000 population. And so I could justify why I want to bring the dollars used because it's going to do the biggest bang for the buck for the majority of the county residents, in which I am a county resident. So, and using this money that we know is short, short of what you actually need and using it for operational funds, I don't think it's a good use of that money that we need to expand the use of that money like banks do. You know, you lend, you build, and then you pay back, just like we all did, majority of us, when we bought our homes. I couldn't go throw cash down when I was 32 years old and buy all my, financed it and used it in that way. So I'm all for working with the county because I am a county person. I mean, I'm part of this county. It's just, I just happen to live in city limits. So that's my take on, on a lot of this. This is laid out in a perfect roadmap. What I've seen in the past with people being suspicious of, okay, they want this money to go in the general, is it going to go where it goes? I think that's the biggest message that I carry with me is yes. And I think as we've had our discussions here in this board, in our sessions, that that is what, the roadmap we've set is the roadmap we want to drive down and not divert from that. So with that, that's all I have to put on.
Through the mayor. Guess it brings it down to me then. First of all, I want to go back to something you talked about and we keep hearing over and over, county this, city that, city this, county that. And, you know, tonight I didn't hear any comments from the public and I was rather shocked because as much as this has been going on, I figured there would be some because this has been going on for years now. But at the cusp of everything, you have to understand, why does a county exist and why does a city exist? And we have distinct roles of how we take care of our community. And they overlap and get very blurred by the citizens sometimes. But I just simply summed it up because I've got all kinds of notes here I was writing down. But, you know, it takes both of us to serve our community. And that needs to sink in with our residents. It takes both of us. You know, you talk about homeless and such. We deal with it basically from an LE side and a code enforcement side. But that doesn't mean we don't support the county. They deal with it from the mental health, the mental illness side. They get the funding for that, but it takes all of us together. So that's the big takeaway that we have to start with. And I know that's where you guys have been is, is how do we take care of our community as a whole? Just going through some things here and thinking about this whole project for tonight. First of all, I want to thank you two guys because you guys have done in about six to nine months, well, we did the previous four years looking at this because we just didn't start this in the last six to nine months. I remember when Councilmember Boomgarden and myself came on the council, 2018, they were, the city at that time was talking about doing a rev measure and they were talking about going out for a general. And it was kind of, just call it, it was a shot from the hip. Wasn't well thought through by a few people at that time. It was kind of like, we're going to throw it out there, we're going to just go get it all of a sudden. When we came on, you know, you and I both were specific. We need a specific tax. But before we even get to a tax measure, we have to do what you guys have worked with our staff doing over the last six to nine months. This actually started, Vice Mayor, when you were mayor and we started appointing all of the ad hocs to oversee the budget. Because we had to go through our budget first to find out, was there any, any money left to redirect anywhere? Working through that year after year, we shifted from just looking at the allocations to the focus became looking forward to, you know, what is the needs going to be in five years? What's the needs going to be in 10 years? And we had to go through that process. And some people were, you know, four years ago or five years ago, you know, you should have gone for a sales tax measure then. We weren't ready. We could not go to the citizens and justify anything that you put on the screen tonight. It was just a gut feeling. So, you know, I want to thank you guys and the entire city team for working over the, you know, last several months, but over the last almost five years on this to get us here. Because the funding plan or the spending plan, not the funding, but the spending plan of what we're going to do with this is really one of the most important pieces. Because if I'm going to ask a resident to pay a tax, they need to know with confidence, how are we going to spend this? What are we going to do? And the first thing we did was we realigned our budget to make sure that it was focused on what our primary mission was, which was public safety, roads, water, sewer. That became our primary mission. We ensured that we, we took care of those. This spending plan that you've got kind of outlined here is a really good first step in this. Because as a citizen, I now know really what you're going to spend it on. You know, Mark, going back to where we were several years ago, and forgive me if I ramble for a minute, but I've, I haven't been in these meetings. It's been the ad hoc committee. I've been on a hiatus from this. So tonight's my night to spew about nine months' worth of things that's in here. So bear with me a minute. But when we came on board, I remember having discussions. You and I were both against a general sales tax measure and for specific reasons. And I can stand here tonight and tell you that I am a Republican and I am at the core anti-tax. Because that's, you know, a lot of what, if you look at it and they say that's why our, our area suffers is because Republicans will vote down a tax, basically cut the nose off to spite the face sometimes to, you know, don't need it. But when you go through things, not all tax is bad. We justify the needs and we start looking at this. And back to what you said, Mark, with things that we can do. If we go for a general, we have some oversight. That's great, but we can also look at things such as bringing forth possible resolutions or something that says, we're never going to dip below a certain percentage for public safety or roads out of our general fund to accomplish those. So there's other measures that we can do to get to the same ends, but by a different means. You know, it's, we've done everything we can on situations. Officer Kosky, man, what that man has done with his team, working with the, the law enforcement and stuff, the impact has been felt, but so much more is needed. And we've heard that from Officer Kosky. He needs that extra person in there that will be able to help take some of the load off and deal with the paperwork and get the social services side done. I mean, we've heard that over and over. I remember sitting down in those budget meetings with police and fire and Jesse. Chief Alexander, thank you for looking forward, you and the entire FD. You've brought us forward scenarios and things that are looking to where the city is going to be five years down the line. You're not coming to us going, we can't meet the need. You're telling us already what the need is and, and we're having to step up. You know, Public Works, we bought a, Ms. Langley, tell me what that contraption is, the paver thing? Patch, yeah, whatever, patch pave truck. We did that a few years ago to try to patch up the roads. That was a million or $2, wasn't it?
I don't recall.
It was, it was seven figures. I remember that. But, you know, we've done everything we can over the time and everybody has stepped up. And then you talk about Beat Six. We have done everything in our power to try to take care of Beat Six. And the people in Beat Six area deserve the same level of protection and the same level of service that the rest of our city does. And, you know, we have ran into roadblocks. It's just what I'm going to call them at this point. We know that the exchange agreement was done 20-plus years ago. And we need to step back down, but we got to come together and common ground with the county to, to, to get that need met. Because you hear about things going on down there that we need to take. I was thrilled to hear the grand jury's report about, we need better roads. Amen. If you drive on half the roads around here, they'll beat the hell out of your car. So just to call it what it is. You know, that tells us that our thinking five years ago is in line with, with with, um, with, you know, what the community is seeing. Um, you know, looking at the numbers that was up there and I'm going to change hats and go back to what I do for a living. Um, in thirty-four plus years, I've never seen the CDFTA, it used to be called the Board of Equalization, take sales taxes and start splitting them like we've heard people talk about, you know, you take half, we'll take half. I've never seen that in my professional career. It goes to the jurisdiction that, you know, has the tax. So with that, and I look at the measures, if you can go back to the percentages up there, I believe it was what eighty-two percent, here we go. Eighty-two percent success rate for the cities versus forty-four. And it gets even worse if it's a specific tax, uh, on the county side. Trying to work with the county, and that's what we all really want to do, is work together to take care of our community. We need to go out and do a city general sales tax. And that's tough for me to say as I was hardcore. It's got to be specific, but I think there's other mechanisms we can do to, to shore this up. Go for a general sales tax measure and at the same time the county should focus on the unincorporated areas of Sutter County. And why is that? We know the numbers that they've already projected they would get when they were doing Measure A. We know we're talking about helping each other and you guys still have to work through the rest of that. But at the end of the day, we'll be able to set at a dais, sit in a room and tell people that the city and the county is trying to take care of our community as a whole. And you know what? We want you to support their measure and they should be telling people to support ours. And that way the whole community wins. And so that's something that, um, as hard as it is to swallow from a tax perspective, I can really get behind. And I just, uh, kudos to you guys. Thank you for the hard work. And, um, I think we're headed down the right path because we do want to see the, uh, problems in the county. And when I say problems, I mean, the staffing issues that the sheriff has talked about, the issues that the DA has brought forward. We want to be able to help them, to help our citizens. So. What? I'm sorry. Oh, so anyway, with that, um, I appreciate what you brought forward and, uh, that's something I can get behind. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Boy, I tell you, most of my, uh, talking points just went out the window. Um, but, um, I would like to thank the Revenue Ad Hoc Committee for doing all the, the hard work. Commend you for the, uh, the long nights and, um, just, just, just the overall work and, and staff with this as well. Um, something that went across my news feed yesterday. Um, I don't know if people are in the room or I know the, uh, the council's aware of this, but, uh, the city of Willows, the city council of Willows, uh, uh, declared a fiscal emergency. And, uh, they are looking at the same process that we are to, to Mark's point. We don't want to be in an emergency, but we're, we can't deny what the, the, the numbers say. And so that certainly caught my eye. This time last year, when we were looking at Measure A and people were asking me what I've thought about it, I was honest, I'm, I'm, I vote, I'm, I'm voting for it because I saw the value to it. Um, and I was even more, um, uh, concerned when, when, um, the sheriff talked about being officers short because that affects the area that I live in. So, um, it's not like I went door to door to support it, but I voted for it. Um, and I, and I still feel good about that decision. Um, but it seemed to me that at the time the, uh, the concern of the community was the, with the fact that it was a general, a, a general tax. And at the, at that time, I didn't understand the, uh, the discrepancy between, uh, or the, I'm sorry, the, the success rate of a general versus a specific tax. And I had that conversation every day. And, um, and I'll, and I'll continue to have that, um, moving forward, uh, because I think that is the, the right call, um, uh, um, as our, uh, Revenue Ad Hoc have, uh, recommended. Um, and, um, I think everything else has been said. Thank you for that presentation. Um, and you, City Manager as well. Thank you.
Mayor. I just wanted to thank you three gentlemen and also staff for all the, the staff for all the hard work they put into it. And I also thank you three gentlemen because we've been through so much, um, so many meetings that it's like second nature. But for to hear it technically the first time, um, and have the response you did, I appreciate that. Because it, I also want to draw attention to the fact that staff has, um, on both sides, county and city actually, have foreshadowed. I mean, we are, we can hear the fiscal train heading right for us. Right? The good news is we have an opportunity to get out of the way and that's what we're here for tonight. And so thank you very much for that.
Just one piggyback quick comment on that is I think to that, to add to that, which is if you're going to tax as a city, then you want to be able to control that money. You don't want to have to go begging Califor, the state of California for the money. So this is a local, it, local, uh, effort to raise money directly for this city. Not something that has to be begged for or applied for or whatever. And so again, um, just wanted to make that point.
Thank you, sir. Any further comments? Okay. Thank you, City Manager. Uh, moving along to business item number ten, uh, fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four cannabis tax fund grant program, CTFGP, from California Highway Patrol. And this is presented by Bill Williams, uh, Police Sergeant.
That was great. That was great.
Mayor, City Council members, thank you for having me tonight. I'll try to be quick with this. Um, in regards to talking about, uh, funding opportunities, the police department has, uh, two that I would like to present tonight. The first one is, uh, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four cannabis, cannabis tax fund grant program that was offered through the California CHP. The California Highway Patrol has offered a grant, um, as I said in beginning of twenty-twenty-three. And this grant is designed to help educate our youth on the dangers of driving under the influence of drugs and alcohol to include cannabis. Uh, in July of twenty-twenty-three, uh, the grant was awarded to the Yuba City Police Department, uh, through our, my predecessor, Sergeant Hulk. The grant is in the amount of twenty-one thousand, three hundred dollars for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. And the grant will run from July first to, uh, twenty-twenty-three to July thirty-first to twenty-twenty-four. The important part is that there is no matching funds required by the city. So the, the CTA, or C, CFTG fund will fund the following presentations, supplies and enforcement activities. It includes two officers on overtime to conduct five middle school presentations on the dangers of driving under the influence of alcohol, drugs to include cannabis, cannabis. What's important about this is we're targeting the, the middle school aged children in an effort to influence future decision-making, um, down the road. So again, as the city was looking at the prior presentation, trying to foreshadow down the road, what kind of issues that we're going to have society-wise. This is a huge issue with, in regards to driving under influence and we want to hit our youth early to let them know about those dangers. Um, in addition, the grant will fund some educational marketing supplies that include messaging and not only English, but Spanish and Pujabi as well. And then in addition, in addition, working with code enforcement, we would conduct five compliance checks on local smoke shops to ensure businesses are not selling illegal product, products or products to our youth. Uh, the Yuba City Police Department's recommendation is to accept the grant. Uh, this is an effort to educate our youth on the dangers of driving under the influence of alcohol, drugs to include cannabis. And the alternatives is to not, not to accept the grant. Are there any questions?
Thank you, sir. Uh, the public hearing for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four cannabis tax fund grant program CF, CTFGP from the California Highway Patrol is now open. Is if there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and comment, uh, and address for the record. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Okay, seeing no, I'm seeing no, uh, I'm now closing this public hearing and bringing the matter back to council.
To the mayor.
Yes.
I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the chief of police to accept twenty-one thousand, three hundred in grant funding for the twenty-three, twenty-four cannabis tax fund grant program and approve expenditure recommendations and authorize a supplemental appropriation in the amount of twenty-three to twenty-one thousand, three hundred uh, to account one hundred dash four three four nine six, two one six four dash six one four three oh and two one six four six three eight oh one.
I've got a motion from Councilmember Shaw.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Piscuali. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Thank you, sir. Oh, yep, for another one. Okay, uh, business item number eleven. Award of, uh, fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four selective traffic enforcement programs, STEP grant to include DUI enforcement and education efforts. And this is presented once again by, uh, Bill Williams, Police Sergeant.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a little bit more robust grant than the previous one. This is the traffic education and enforcement units of bread and butter, uh, and it's called the STEP grant. Selective Traffic Enforcement Program, uh, that is offered by the California Office of Traffic Safety enables law enforcement agencies to field police officers on an overtime status to target certain driving behaviors with directed enforcement efforts to make the roadway safer for the community. Now, what does that look like? In regards to the grant itself, OTS, California OTS awarded the Yuba City Police Department the STEP grant for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four in the amount of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The grant will run from October one, twenty-twenty-three to September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. And again, there are no matching funds required from the city. There are certain, uh, components on the STEP grant. The STEP grant, uh, provides some basic equipment that I'll talk about here in a little bit, but the majority of the grant is focused on traffic enforcement efforts in the community. Those tracking, traffic enforcement operations consist of DUI checkpoints. We'll have approximately six DUI checkpoints throughout the year. In addition, we'll have DUI saturation patrols. What's the difference between a checkpoint and saturation patrol? Our saturation patrol is a two-man unit that is specifically sent out during the hours of seven o'clock in the evening to one o'clock in the morning. That's where we see a lot of our DUI drivers, uh, during that specific time period. So our effort is to saturate that time period with officers that are specifically looking for, um, different driving behaviors and an attempt to get those DUI drivers off the roadway. In addition to that, we have collaborative DUI enforcement efforts. I have reached out to Sutter County Sheriff's Department in addition to CHP and they are interested in doing some collaborative DUI enforcement efforts in the city of Yuba City. In addition, we'll field officers for general traffic enforcement, distracted driving enforcement and pedestrian and bicycle safety operations. In addition, continuing motorcycle safety enforcement, street racing and sideshow enforcement operations, which will be supplemented with our new Yuba City Municipal Code that was passed earlier this year. In addition, we'll have some collaborative traffic enforcement operations. The grant also authorizes travel expenses for traffic-related trainings such as, uh, drug recognition expert, um, training, standardized fields of variety test training, in addition to a couple of other different, um, traffic-related, uh, trainings that are offered, uh, through California Post. It also provides us some DUI checkpoint supplies. And in regards to the equipment portion, we'll be purchased, or we would purchase three in-vehicle radar devices to help with, uh, speed monitoring. The city of Yuba City, uh, we have had a longstanding history of working with OTS and have had a very successful working relation, relationship, relationship with OTS. And, um, the police department's, uh, position is to accept the grant in an effort to continue that longstanding tradition. Again, the alternative is not to accept the grant. Are there any questions?
Thank you. The public hearing for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four selective traffic enforcement program, STEP grant to include DUI enforcement and education efforts is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Seeing none? I'm now closing the hearing and bringing the matter back to council.
To the mayor, move to approve staff recommendations B and C.
Second.
I have a motion from the Vice Mayor and a second from Councilmember Boomgarden. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you.
Moving to business item number twelve, consideration of a development agreement for the Sohal Ranch tentative subdivision map, TSM twenty-two dash zero two and the associate, associated, uh, mitigated negative declaration. And this is presented by Mr. Doug Libby, our Deputy Director, Director of Development Services. The floor is yours, sir.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Good to be with you this evening. So the purpose of this item is to consider approval of a development agreement for the Sohal Ranch subdivision, tentative subdivision map twenty-two oh two and the associated mitigated negative declaration. So this is a forty-one acre site located at the southeast corner of Lincoln and George Washington. Uh, this area, as you know, was actually annexed to the city, uh, in two thousand twenty-two, part of a larger area. Uh, a little background for the, um, various plans, but I think it's really important to note that in April two thousand four, uh, was the first time that the city general plan actually planned its entire sphere, our entire sphere of influence. Um, that had not happened before. And then the land uses that were adopted were further refined as part of the former Lincoln East specific plan. And the Sohal Ranch subdivision is proposed within the southern half, uh, southern portion of what was the south part of Lincoln East. Uh, last month, September twenty-seventh, our planning commission contingently approved the subdivision map and recommended approval of the environmental assessment and the development agreement to your council. So the map, a hundred and seventy-nine lots, four point seven dwelling units per acre. That's very typical of low-density residential development that Yuba City has historically seen. Um, what makes this site a little unique is it does include a two-point-six acre net acre neighborhood park uh, in the southeast corner of the site and also includes, uh, developer will be constructing a point-one-one acre uh, sewer lift station, which is, would be located in the northeast corner. And then the southeast corner is the neighborhood park. And the project would be built out in three villages or three phases. So what is a development agreement? Well, they're allowed by state law. They need to address things beyond the standard zoning, uh, development standards. So pretty wide open in what a development agreement can occur. So they're, they, each one is unique. It's important to recognize that the, uh, agreement before you tonight was for, formatted after the Newcombe Ranch Development Agreement and the Chima Ranch subdivision, which you approved, uh, early part of this year. So an agreement like this has to have something for each side. So for the developer, they're looking for certainty. Uh, you have higher interest rates right now. They want to kind of weather the economic storms. So they're asking for a fifteen-year term on the development agreement with an option for a five-year extension. In exchange, the city would receive, uh, land dedication for the neighborhood park. Uh, they would install frontage improvements, uh, and complete site grading for the park. They would also pay an additional, uh, neighborhood park impact fee of thirty-two hundred dollars per dwelling unit. And that fee actually came from, comes out of the, uh, Newcombe Ranch, um, development agreement. And it's been carried forward into the Chima Ranch Development Agreement you saw earlier this year. Compatibility. So this is in a rural, currently rural residential agricultural area, but it's been planned for, for urban uses for twenty years. And it's important to recognize that this area has been within Yuba City's sphere of influence since the nineteen eighties, the mid nineteen eighties, actually. So I thought this map would be important to show because it shows you the refined land uses and what was the former Lincoln East specific plan. But more importantly, it shows kind of where this project is in, in the world in relationship to other development. So the city annexed from Lincoln in the world in relationship to other developments. So the city annexed from Lincoln Road, George Washington, south to Boge, back to the city limits of Sanborn last year. We have an approved subdivision, West Sanborn, and earlier this year, Chima Ranch. Here's where this project is located. You'll see the neighborhood park. And what's also exciting, you get to see what else is coming. So this is the start of things to come for this area. So with regard to environmental, it's important to note that when the city did its general plan, it evaluated urban uses for the larger sphere of influence and adopted an EIR for that. When the city considered the Lincoln East specific plan, it included this project site. Urban uses, again, adopted an environmental impact report. But for this project, we still have to complete a certain level of sequel analysis, which we have done. It did identify certain mitigation measures, which we've incorporated into it. And with those, we feel there's no evidence in the record the proposed project would have a significant effect in the environment. And that's why a mitigated NEGDEC is recommended to your counsel. Development agreements require certain findings to be made, consistency with the general plan, kind of further general plan goals. We have laid those out in the ordinance that's before you tonight. There's reference to a water assessment. This project is not subject under state law to having a water assessment performed, and this area has the required flood protection. The recommendation, conduct a public hearing, make the necessary findings, and introduce an uncodified ordinance at the city council approving environmental assessment twenty-two oh-six by adopting a mitigated NEGDEC for the tentative subdivision map twenty-two oh-seven and approving development agreement between the city of Uba City and Bellbeare Sohal Family Trust for the Sohal Ranch subdivision. So with that, happy to answer any questions. And the representative for the developer, Sean Menard, with MHM Engineering, is also here to answer questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Public hearing for consideration of a development agreement for the Sohal Ranch tentative subdivision map, TSM twenty-two dash zero-two, and the associated mitigated, mitigated negative declaration is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the counsel on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. And we do have a card from Ms. Heather Esben.
Good evening, gentlemen. So I'm Heather Esben. I live on the corner of Lincoln and Sanborn, which would be impacted potentially by this development. So at the planning commission meeting, I brought up a couple of points. And I do understand that we kind of have to approve development when it comes. But just remembering that there is no school for this development, and I, there probably won't be a school coming in anytime in the next fifteen years when this is supposed to be done. So the, the school that they would be using would be Lincoln, most likely. And there are no sidewalks. There's nothing. That's all county road between this development and the Lincoln School. So just keep that in mind when this comes up for a more final approval, when there's actual development that's occurring. Because that could be a bit of a danger if kids are riding bikes or things like that. But in any case, the, the park, there was a comment, which they didn't mention, that some of the council thought that the park was probably in the wrong place. But when you look at the entire design, the park is actually in the best place possible because it's impacting not only, or it's, it's available for not only the the single-family homes, but for the high-density and the medium-density, which would be maybe apartment complexes, things like that. So it's kind of, they wanted it way in the corner of George Washington. I, and I didn't agree because, one, there's orchards on the other side. So who knows what, you know, raccoons or something in there. But it's not, it, it makes sense to have it nestled in there. Now, when you do the math, and I just did the math, it's thirty-two hundred, I believe, in impact fees, and a hundred and seventy, six hundred and seventy-eight total. So that's about five hundred and sixty thousand dollars in impact fees. You just approved a park, which is about half that size. And you just also saw how expensive playground equipment is for tots and the five through twelve. That's not going to be enough money. The city will have to put in something in order to complete that park. And when that does get, come up, it's going to be even more expensive than what we're paying right now for the playground equipment at Shanghai. So just keep that in mind when you're approving these things, that even though it looks like a lot, it's not. You're going to have to have some money for that set aside. And my worry is, is that they'll have everything done. And I know there's a trigger point when the park gets to be pulled, put together, but then the city will have to probably put something in for that. So I, and also note that, make sure that when you submit these things or you get these things in, there's no park name on there, because otherwise people will start calling it Sohal Park. And the city has a naming convention, and it's not the developer that decides who names the parks. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any further public comment on this item?
Mayor, members of the council, I'm Sean Menard with MHM Engineering. And I represent, the owner is representative this year also tonight. Doug did a great job presenting the project, so there are very little questions or things for me to go over. But one of the big things and, and one of the things was the park. And that was a big item for us as a developer in the developing this piece of property. It's a very costly project or item on this development. And Doug can go into it. It does take more than a hundred and seventy-nine lots to develop a park. You would need to do that thirty-two hundred dollars a lot. It takes like almost six hundred lots. And so, yeah, this project can't bear that burden. And that's one of the things that's covered in the DA to take into consideration our fair share, what we do build, what we get fee credits for, and where we can use the fee credit. So it is a big, having this DA is very important to address this park situation. There's also other infrastructure. We have major roads on the north and the west side of the project. All those are coming into play. So the DA is very important. Without the DA, we really wouldn't have a project. So that, that's critical. And then Doug explained why we're asking for fifteen years. The market, you don't know how long it'll take for the market to develop and absorb a hundred and seventy-nine lots. So if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them. But again, we're supportive of all the things in the DA, and we worked very hard to get to this point.
Any questions from the council?
I just threw the mayor. I happened to take a look at that planning commission meeting. I just wanted to, to say, appreciate your patience with the multitude of questions that came, came at you that time. So Sean, good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Menard. Any further comments from the public on this item? Okay, seeing none? Closing the matter and closing the public hearing and bringing the matter back to counsel.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Libby, go back to the DA with the amount for the thirty-two and whatever. I have a couple of questions. There you go. That impact fee was based on what type of figures, figures that possibly in fifteen years down the road or current dollars? How was that brought to the table?
Thank you for asking the question. So the thirty-two oh-six figure comes out of the additional neighborhood park fee that was included with the, the DA for the, for Newcombe, Newcombe Ranch. Okay. But there, it's important to recognize that, that additional neighborhood park fee is based on a base year of twenty-twenty and has an annual cost inflator that's included in it. So whenever the time comes that we're going to actually use that figure, you're seeing the base figure. It's actually going to be higher.
Is it based on the fifteen years? Is it the fifteen year plus five?
You know, I don't have that background. I'm not sure if Ben, you have that?
Whatever goes out. So it just starts stacking after the
Correct, from twenty-twenty.
The next five.
Right.
All right. If you have to make a question, thank you. That's all.
Any further comments? Okay. I'll leave it up to you, counsel, for action.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Have a question of the city attorney. Do I have to read this whole item B?
This one you do. It's an ordinance. I'm sorry. If you like, I'll read it for you and you say yes.
Oh, go ahead. Yeah.
Okay. I'm assuming it's a motion to introduce. Is that right, council member?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. This would be a motion to introduce an uncodified ordinance to the city council, the city of Uba City approving environmental assessment twenty-two oh-six by adopting, adopting a mitigated negative declaration prepared for the tentative subdivision map, TSM twenty-two dash oh-two, Sohal Ranch subdivision, approving a development agreement between the city of Uba City and the Barbell Sohal Family Trust for the Sohal Family subdivision, TSM twenty-two oh-two, on forty-one point three-six acres located at the southeast corner of Lincoln Road and George Washington Boulevard as assessors parcels number sixty-five dash ten dash oh-five and sixty-five dash ten dash oh-six and waive the first reading.
I've got a motion from councilmember Baumgard.
Second.
And a second from councilmember Piscuali. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Libby. Okay, moving along to business item number thirteen. Boge Road, infrastructure, Newcombe Ranch funding request. And this is presented by Mr. Ben Moody.
All right. So good evening, council members of the city council, mayor members of the city council. All right, we'll get this going. So the item before you is somewhat unique, and it, and it has to do with Boge Sewer Master Plan, which was just mentioned briefly. And so this is a big plan. It's been really in the city system for ten years. When you, when you look at the, the history on it, when the applicant originally applied with Newcombe Ranch being one of the lead applicants, it's really initiated that twenty-thirteen, twenty-fourteen timeline, and there's been a lot going on with that. And so it's the southeast corner of the city, seven hundred and forty-one acres with a lot of different land uses and mixed use in there. Make different land uses. And so a little timeline, twenty-fourteen to twenty-nineteen, applications. And that was really the period where there was coordination to finalize the EIR and the master plan. In twenty-nineteen, that was when the EIR was adopted in the specific plan amendments in the pre-annexation zoning for that area to come into the sphere of influence for the city and set it up for future annexation. January twenty-one, twenty, this is an important date because that's when the development agreement was originally established with Newcombe Ranch and then also set up the tentative map. So in twenty-twenty. And so since then, you know, we had a thing called COVID, but you could see that there's been consistent progress from Newcombe Ranch and that developer to bring development to reality. And so in twenty-one, with city council's effort in coordination with the county, there's master tax change agreement between the city and the county that was approved. That was a major step in order to annex that area into the city limits. And then in twenty-two, that annexation was complete. And then where we're at today in twenty-twenty-three is, is really getting down to the the real specifics on making this development happen with the funding for it. And so I'll dive into that here in just a minute. Just for everybody's reference, when you zoom in on that seven hundred and forty-one acres, Newcombe Ranch is phase one of the Boge Stewart Master Plan. It's the area east of ninety-nine, south of Boge Road to Stewart Road. So this area in the blue here. And what I want to highlight, and I'll come back to a little later, this is phase one, and it's been phase one with Boge Stewart Master Plan because the infrastructure's on the east. And so you can't build Kelsey, you can't build phase two or your, your other phases over here to the west or to the south because the infrastructure has to get there first. And so that's, that's one of the key components of this, of this funding participation that we're talking about today. Here's a colored graph. The land use is always nice to see. And really, I want to focus in on the red, which is your commercial property that's proposed at the southeast corner of ninety-nine and Boge. And then you have the yellow, which is the low-density single-family residential. And then you have a park and a detention pond, which is also major storm drain infrastructure for this whole plan area. And so I'll, I'll dive into that a little bit more. Just real high level, I'll buzz through here, but one of the key, one of the key items with, with why we're here tonight and talking about this is Boge Road. And so Boge Road is an impact fee eligible road. And so what that means is, is that the city collects citywide. So when somebody builds a house up in northwest Uba City, they pay a city impact fee. A portion of that impact fee is, includes costs to ultimately build Boge Road to a four-lane road for citywide future growth. And so when, when a developer comes in for impact fee eligible roads, there's a credit typically, and I'll dive into it here in a minute, but there's a credit where the city historically says, okay, you build it, we'll pay you back as development comes. And so the, the city really has an obligation with that being an impact fee road that we collect money on to reimburse for that, for a portion of that roadway. And then you also have, besides the roadway, there's also water lines, a sixteen-inch water main that oversize that would also be, it's oversized for citywide development, including for the plan area. You have a sewer main, which this is a critical sewer main because what this is, is there's a direct link to the, to the plant, to the wastewater treatment facility. And this is really the master plan, the sewer master plan connection to extend the sewer out to the west that then ultimately facilitates growth to the west part of the city sphere, to the Lincoln East area. And this sewer line is critical really for any future growth. And that, that was highlighted and discussed previously with an action where ARPA funds were programmed to, a portion to build this segment of the road here. This, this segment of the sewer line. And then you have some storm drainage. So we're in, we're flat around here. And so drainage is a huge thing. And majority of this, this plan area drains to Gilizer. And so the, everything west of railroad predominantly is planned to be, go to a, a new basin slash park down along in this area, south, southwest of Phillips Road, and then would punch under the highway and then connect ultimately into Gilizer Slough to the west, which has a huge price tag with it. So what's before you tonight is that the developers, developers getting into the design and the cost to build, build their development. They, they've put ten years worth of effort in to bring this fruition. And what it's really come to is that it's completely upside down. The cost for building Boge Road, which is basically an obligation for the city for ultimately because of the oversizing of the utility infrastructure, maintenance costs, deferred maintenance that we've, when we've annexed into the city, that there's deferred maintenance that needs to be for the north side of the road. That, and then, then doing that, they're going to be upside down. And so what that means is if they, if they built their entire project and we gave them every impact fee, road impact fee dollar back, they would still be in a negative position. And so what that means is development doesn't happen typically. And the developer and the engineer here to help any, answer any specifics, but you know, it, it's a partnership, but nobody moves forward to lose money. You're not going to go build this and then be in a negative position at the end of it. And historically, that's been there, so I'll key in historically, that's how the city's processed developments because of priorities, because of timing, just because a development wants to come in, it's not necessarily a city priority as far as, as far as where we focus those impact fee dollars. However, with this one, it's, it's a little bit different. Because of, of the deferred maintenance, the, the critical component of that sewer line, getting that to the west, and then also the, the potential revenue and having a coherent, you know, a, a complete roadway done. We've, we've heard over and over again from when we come through with developments is why don't you build the road first, then bring the development? And so what, what the Newcombe Ranch is basically proposing to us is, is, is for us to entertain, is to change our process. Instead of having a pay-as-you-go where the developer comes in, they build a little segment, they build their half of the road, and then we give them reimbursement credits, which, which really has this historic problem of delayed, delay because there's uncertainty if they're going to get their money back. And if, if the building doesn't happen and kind of a hodgepodge development because of the way the infrastructure has to be built through there, they're asking for a partnership that the city upfronts their obligation in a coordinated way. And so there's a lot of words there. I don't know if I need a timeout. You guys want to answer? And you guys want to answer any questions with that before I dive into? Okay, and so part of the way to handle that is through a DA. And so there's an existing development agreement that was done in 2020, 2021. I don't have to go back, but the, that was done pretty much our standard way. A developer comes in, they front all the money, they build it and do it. But based on, based on these changes, based on the funding, based on the cost, based on this being kind of the, the critical key for to unlock future development. That's where this one is a little bit unique because of the, really without some sort of participation, the project doesn't go. And so I, I believe there's, I believe there's strong benefits on staff's view of it based on potential revenue because it, if the infrastructure's there, then, then the property taxes and the commercial property can be developed. And so then you have grocery stores, you have, you have a consistent road built all at once with that, with that sewer line. So you're not building a small segment, cutting it back up for the sewer line. The, and then having a, a potential commercial development keep passing you by because it's not large enough to really bring in that infrastructure to that commercial property. So you definitely dive into that a little bit more at the end. And the applicant, I'm sure has plenty of examples and talk about it. And so the question is, why don't we do this more often? You know, why don't we change our policy instead of doing this development first? And it comes down to really just priority, available funding and just how that plays out. Because you know, many times if, if there's a development that occurs up in the northwest, if the city has limited impact fees, we have a priority to focus them on Bridge Street or a priority to focus them on Walton. And so we don't have that available funds. And so, so, so when we look at this, it really comes down to cost and how you prioritize the cost. And so the cost for this, it's approximately $9 million, Bog Road and State Route 99 because there'd be some turn pocket improvements at the signal there. And then you have the lift station where $2 million of that three to four million has already been programmed. And with this, the developers also, they understand that there has to be some skin in the game. And so, and so with this proposal, there's, there's also, what they're saying is that they're willing to put that upfront with the construction of Phillips Road, Bog, and some of the Bog, the Bog Stewart Master Plan drainage. And so, and that's, that's not a small amount. It's $14 million plus. And what that would do is really put the infrastructure, the roads in that would then set up and be ready for development. And then also talk about timelines. There's also discussions in there with the in-depth process and analysis that occurred through the EIR and the master plan. There's discussions that through the DA that we also consider looking at expediting a parcel map and development plan review. And so where the land use has already been established, where the roads have already been analyzed and looked at for development, I think there is an opportunity in council. If, if direction is given to look at that and amend and potentially amend it that we could look at through the development agreement, looking at options to try to streamline that. So they don't, they don't have to start square one, come back and propose a plan, go to the planning commission, come to the city council to re-review a development plan when you really know where the commercial area is going to be and where you know the road's going to be. And so we could handle it all together. So that keeps, you know, up to a year delay and sometimes on how it goes through, through review and processes. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And staff is requesting, recommending that council authorize staff to initiate an amendment, Development Agreement 1901 for Newcombe Ranch Subdivisions, to implement language related to financing Bog Road infrastructure, streamlining development processes and establishing specific time requirements related to Bog Road and State Route 99.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Any public comments?
Mayor, members of the council, I'm Sean Menard with MHM Engineering. I represent the, our clients on this, the Newcombe Ranch LLC on this project. As Ben said, we, we've tried everything we can. You know, they gave me the job to figure out how to make it happen, you know, get all the costs together. Every time we did the cost analysis, we kept on finding that we were, you know, the first, first, we call it to build the first house was way too expensive. And so we worked through the numbers and we, it was very clear that the regional benefit infrastructure, Bog Road, the sewer lines he was describing, were putting such a burden on it and they wouldn't let us build a half a pipe. So, so we were stuck with building the whole pipe. So we, we asked for some assistance in, through this program to cover the regional benefit items that not only benefit the Newcombe Ranch, but benefit the whole Bog Stewart Master Plan. And, you know, Bog Road's been in the infrastructure plan for 20 years. So it's, it's a regional benefit and it's causing us not to be able to make our project pencil out. So that's what we initially asked for this request and, and hopefully it works out and we're able to move forward. So if you have any questions or other items that we came up with, try to answer.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for discussion or action.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
You know, this is, what we consistently hear that's an impediment to development is obviously the roads, but also infrastructure. And you know, this is an opportunity for this city anyway, to reach out and effectively partner with something that's going to spur, in my opinion, going to spur some much needed housing, some much needed commercial. And as Mr. Menard said, and, and the developers have indicated, improvements to the infrastructure that could open the door for some pretty significant development down in this area. Bog Road is a well-traveled roadway. It is a big expenditure. But I think it is one well worth the city's investment to try to not only take care of the traffic issue and the infrastructure, but perhaps help, help development get going down in the Bog Store. I think one of the things I'm equally excited about is continuing to take a look at this expedited planning process. I know that our neighbors over in Yuba County are employing this. It's not without, of course, a tiny bit of risk, but I trust our staff to carry forth our, our desires as, as elected representatives to, to get the right things in the right places. And, and with that, I will conclude my comments.
Okay, through the mayor.
Hmm.
You know, again, this is one of those things that we have to look at as a city and a council that our residents in the south end of town have told us over and over and over that, you know, they want things down there. They want a grocery store down there. They want restaurants down there. When you look around, there's not much commercial space left. And to Mark's point, it's the lack of infrastructure. We've heard that over and over and over to where it's, that's what holds up everything. You know, we have people that want to come and want to be a part of our community. But at the end of the day, we don't have ground that is shovel ready, ready to go. The infrastructure's not there. So that's why they either don't come or they go somewhere else. You know, so with that, and, and Mark and I talked about this being on the development impact fee subcommittee or ad hoc committee. Yep, this is well beyond the subdivision that, that is tied to, you know, next to it. This is about unlocking the potential for South Yuba City. And then it's that investment, not an expenditure, but this is an investment in our future. Again, trying to meet the needs of our residents in the south end of town. So very much believe we need to do this. The expedited procedures, as we've talked about. If we can clear the red tape, we do not need to be, you know, have paralysis by analysis and government agencies continue to do that because this committee will want to review it. The next committee wants to review it. If we got all the safeguards in there, we've already done this years ago. Then we don't need to get bogged down in process anymore. We need to be shovel ready, ready to go. But before I turn over the mic, I, there's one possibility that we haven't explored. And so I'm just going to put him on the spot. And will MHM just write us $14 million and pay it? And we'll be done tonight. No, Sean, you guys do a great job in analyzing everything, but I appreciate all the work that you've put in. And I think this is, as you said, a partnership. This is an investment and a partnership for our future. So, and we need to take care of the people in the south end of Yuba City.
Thank you, sir.
Through the mayor.
Hmm.
My question is about, are these, this $12 million, Annie and up for the city? Is that today's dollars or is that down the road dollars? I mean, how we, are we figuring this? Because we all know that tomorrow is going to cost more.
And so those are today's dollars. And, and with that, the process would be, this would go back to have a DA. So we would really get with staff, really analyze and put in specific timelines where it basically says, okay, we're going to say go with a commitment at, at a certain point. Next spring, you need to initiate design. And then within that timeline, there's so much time for design, then we initiate construction. And so those, those timelines and those specifics will be laid down in the development agreement. The development agreement will then be circulated to the planning commission and then ultimately to the city council to be introduced and, and approved. And so those are dollars today. But, but definitely with those timelines, there would be a look that, you know, we're not planning this for 15 years in the future. We're planning this for, to occur soon.
So what we're, just clarification from me. What we're doing this evening is we're just saying that we're going to have a development agreement and there are no dollars attached to this at this point. Am I correct with that?
Now, through the development agreement, the city would be agreeing to contribute the funding for the Bog Road improvements, the Highway 99 portion of the improvements, the sewer and water and storm drain within Bog Road. And so there is a dollar amount attached to it. And I think, you know, what we would put in there is define what the city's responsibilities are, the developers' responsibilities, how we will address. Because there'll be change orders, there'll be contingencies. All of that will have to be addressed through the development agreement.
Thank you.
And the other thing I just want to point out too, is there may be an option for us to bond for those improvements. So it's not necessarily cash upfront, but we're paying debt service payments towards that construction.
Thank you.
Back through the mayor, if I can add one more thing, and thank you, Ms. Langley, because that was huge when we talked about that is it may not be just 12 million out of the budget. We can, we got other options. But with that, something Mr. Moody brought up that is very important. We don't want this to be a project that just sets there as orchards for 20 years and then it finally gets built. And, and I know that the developer, and we've talked with, with them and Sean, some pretty aggressive timelines. You know, we build it, they're going to build it, we're going to work together and get this done because it makes no sense to pay it or bond 11 to 12 million dollars out and it's set there as orchards. So we're both parties need to be engaged in this. And that's what all's got to go into that DA so that we're, we're good partners in this to get it done.
Through the mayor, I'd like to add one other thing. We just had a discussion a few minutes ago about a revenue measure. And so the public may be asking, why are you talking about a revenue measure? But then you're talking about contributing $13 million to this project. It's based upon funding source. So the water, the water line would come out of water fund, the wastewater line would come out of wastewater fund. The road would come out of development impact fees and road funds. So it's designated sources. It's not general fund dollars going towards these improvements.
Through the mayor, I may even add on to that is that we're doing, it's an investment for the future too. And so what we put in now, we're going to, we're going to see exponentially later. So for the reasons I already said, I fully support the, the idea. Thank you.
All right, I'll bring it back to council for action.
We'll be approved.
I've got a motion from the vice mayor.
Second.
And a second from council member Shaw. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. Okay, future agenda items, future agenda items. These are opportunities for, to discuss with city manager about items that came up in the meeting this evening that you would like to have brought back to council later date. Do we have any comments from the public? Seeing none. Reports and communications. The following reports and communications items are provided for the council's information. No action can be taken on these items unless the section, under this section, unless the council agrees to it on a subsequent agenda. City manager's report.
So we have guidebooks for accessory dwelling unit and urban lot splits available on the city's website. And we've been asked the question before, is the city supportive of ADUs? Yes, we are. And we have the guidebooks to show it. A lot of activities happening within the next couple of weeks. Ashley, our development liaison, is hosting a shop talk at Carlito's on October 18th at noon related to business licenses. October 25th is Waffle Wednesday at the Senior Center. And October 19th is on Pluma Street is the DBA trick or treat from 4 to 6 p.m. October 28th, there are several events going on. The Yuba Center Science Project through Salav. The Police Department Halloween Trick or Treat is at the Police Department from noon to 2 p.m. There's a Parks and Recreation Halloween Festival at Gauchea Aquatic Park from 3 to 8 p.m. And then also on November 2nd, there's a Senior Resource Fair at the Senior Center from 9 a.m. to noon. That's well attended. And just one note, at this point in time, we're planning to cancel the November 21st council meeting. And so the next meeting will be November 7th. The meeting, first meeting in December is typically the ceremonial to transfer over the mayor and vice mayor. And then we'll have a meeting December 19th.
Thank you, city manager. Council reports. This evening, we'll begin with council member Boomgard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Several ad hoc meetings, revenue, et cetera. Obviously, we spent time on that today already. Did meet with the regional housing authority. They're still pursuing the Richland Senior Housing Project, Richland Village. There's more to be known about that. Attendance Sutter Butts Flood Control along with, with you, Mr. Mayor. We should expect a presentation from Michael Basset on the regional impact fee that everyone except for Live Oak and Yuba City now has approved. And I went to a business after hours, you had precision one. They, they had a little get together to recognize their expansion of their business. So that's it.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Harris.
Last couple of weeks, we've done youth commission interviews. We have two more, actually 10 more interviews set for tomorrow. And as predicted, a plethora of very well qualified candidates. And this is always the hardest one because we have so few positions and so many of our young people who want to step up. So we do have a tough choice, some choices to make, personnel board interviews also. And we made one appointment for that. I had the honor of attending fire, fire department badge pinning for two promotions, promoters. I think I know, remember the names, but I'm not going to try to remember it. So I'll just say two promoters, one to captain. And also, as we've already stated, Ben, a, my schedule's dotted and, and highlighted like crazy for all meetings related to this potential revenue measure. So that's been keeping us very busy. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Council member Piscali.
Thank you, mayor. I too went, there was two separate pinnings. There was promotional pinnings, which was really nice to see. And then there was in addition to it, another one, Station 2, I guess it is, down on Gray Avenue. And as well, that, that's always nice to see that we're getting young, young, new and promoting our, our people of, that protect us. Went to the back the badge with my brethren here last Saturday night. What a worthy thing. I, I can't stress. It struck me as wow, this is something I'm going to carry and start championing. The, the need for, for protecting our people that protect us is, is so important that I can't stress that enough. I was very moved. Their speaker was phenomenal, real life, right in your grill type thing that he spoke about. And I commend us. I believe we were the only elected officials at the program, which I'm proud of. I think we, we, we say we want to serve the, protect the people that protect us. And I think we step up and do that time and time again. And I think we step up and do that time and time again. I went to a biomass conference in winters because I'm on the air quality control board. And, uh, it was very interesting. Uh, the old biomass that you think of, you know, burning it and steam or whatever is going out the door. And they've got a fusion process and I believe it's a thing of the future to get us to the next step of our footprint changing from greenhouse gases. Uh, and this might be a great opportunity, uh, for us to, uh, uh, say our doors are open for this kind of development. I mean, for as far as businesses coming in, they, they don't, they don't pollute. Uh, uh, there was this company in Woodland. Woodland is kind of the forefront of this, which I was, that's why they had it down in winters. Um, but really some really good stuff coming out. And I, I think we as a community need to get out and, uh, see if we can get this thing championing coming our direction because I think it's a great economic boost for our, for our area. Uh, and with that, I am, oh, I'm going to be doing a trick or treat on Pluma Street and I am going to be costumed. So be ready for that one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, council member Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, mine's brief. Um, not much, uh, that I've had going on the last few weeks as I am just now starting to reengage. Uh, did attend the back the badge, did intend precision one. Um, and, uh, just really re-engaging with everything that my family's been through over the, over the summer here. A couple more tough weeks ahead of us, uh, with final services and stuff on that front. And, uh, I will not be at the, uh, next council meeting uh, because I have a investment advisor conference I have to be in, uh, or be at in Chicago. So I just want everyone to know where I, you know, why I'm not going to be here. I have a conference to attend. But I know the city is in great hands with our city manager and, you know, no, my colleagues up here do a great job. So, uh, looking forward to continuing to re-engage and, uh, what we've got ahead of us. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, okay, I'll make this brief, brief. Uh, I started, uh, the last two weeks. Uh, it was a ribbon cutting at Ardent Family Services, which is a very noble, um, business. Uh, they deal with, um, foster kids. And so that was really eye opening for me. And, uh, we're glad that they're, um, part of our business community. Um, I was asked to be the commencement speaker at the Center, let's try that again, commencement speaker at Center, Center, Center County Super Tanta Schools. And it was, um, the cosmetology and it was the, uh, medical, medical technicians. And it was a huge turnout for that. It was at the Nazarian Church on Butte, uh, on George Washington. Very well attended. Uh, they're really fulfilling a need for our community. Uh, these are individuals that are, a lot of them are working adults and, um, or have jobs that they're, they're going into, um, halfway through the program. So it's really exciting to see that work out for them. I did a rib cutting at, uh, Luneli Wellness, um, over there off of Tharp. Uh, as mentioned before, the personnel, uh, board interviews as well as the first round of the youth commission interviews, these outstanding candidates. We've got our work cut out for us on that. Uh, Sabuca was mentioned earlier, but I did have a Zoom meeting yesterday with Senator Nilo specifically about a, um, an island out in the middle of the Feather River that grows by the day. And we are hoping that the senator can advocate for us to get some funding on that because the permits are already in place, but the permits are only good for about another year and a half. And those of us that have been around here when the water gets up, know that we need that, um, channel capacity. So we're hoping that the, the senator can point us in the right direction for that. Uh, Gilser was canceled this month with mosquito. Uh, we, uh, reviewed and approved the manager's, uh, contract. Uh, the West Nile activity is dropped off, which is encouraging as well as the, the mosquito activity, a lot of it has to do with the cold weather. And not your house? Okay. Well, what's, what's your address again? District two. Um, I was lucky enough to, um, participate, uh, real quickly. Uh, this was my first time, time ever with the, uh, the, the run pink October, which is, uh, facilitated out, out of the, uh, the Givicky, um, property. And I, I was, uh, along with one of the, uh, school board members, I was standing at the, the first turn. And I have to give a huge shout out to our Yuba City Police Department. We had an officer out there that reacted quickly and on an incident and, uh, uh, really, um, really protected the safety of some runners out there. So a huge shout out to our, our law enforcement, um, officers at that. Thank you very much. And then I walked across the street and helped out with Justice Sir? No. Yuba Center, okay. And, uh, helped, uh, pass out, uh, food for nonstop hour, hour and a half to a, a, a line of cars. It felt like it went on forever, but what a, what a worthy, worthy cause, uh, to, um, to attend as well. And that, I would like to, uh, one more time, uh, mention my appreciation for this council, especially our ad hoc, revenue ad hoc, with all the hard work that they put into that presentation and the city manager tonight. We've got a long road ahead of us, but, um, if we decide to go down that road. Um, but it's all about, uh, communication and getting the word out to our citizens. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.